Mr. Gary Clardy was leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, Dan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a moment of silence? I really want to remember, especially I have some friends that actually have a son that's serving in Egypt, who has been under a lot of stress and is in the embassy there and all with very few people around, so think about our soldiers and our people that are representing us all over the world tonight. It's a very tenuous time for them, so please a moment of silence for that and for our school system for this year, please. Thank you. We begin each September, one of the first tasks with the Rutherford County Board of Education would be to elect a chairperson for the next year, and so the floor is now open for nominations for Rutherford County Board of Education Chair for this year. Mr. Blair?
Mr. Odom, I'd like to nominate Mr. Terry Hodge to continue as our board chairman.
Okay, I have a nomination for Mr. Terry Hodge.
Second.
Second, Mr. Nipper. Any additional nominations?
I move the nomination cease.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, nomination ceases. Mr. Terry Hodge, congratulations, you are the board chair for another year.
I'd just like to say I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve us past year and for all the service we did this year, and I'll do my best, try to do a good job for every one of you, so I'll just throw that out there to you. The next item of business is the election of the vice chair, and I'll open it up for nominations now. Mr. Holliday?
Mr. Hodge, with honor, I'd like to nominate Wayne Blair to serve as vice chair.
Got a second?
Second.
Mr. Nipper? Any further nominations?
I move the nomination cease.
Motion to cease. Got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Young. All in favor of Mr. Blair to be vice chairman? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
Approval of agenda?
So moved. And a second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven. Looks like it brings us to the visitors section, I believe. Looks like Ms. Michaels has. Ten visitors, is that correct? I appreciate everybody coming out and wanting to speak, a lot of times, a lot of times that's the best way for the board to, you know, maybe look at things different, to basically just hear what the general public says, so before we start in with the speakers, the visitors, just got a few guidelines, and I think everybody knows, it's probably been to a board meeting, we try to limit you to three minutes, and Ms. Marshall right here keeps the time, so when she asks you to wrap it up, if you would, be courteous enough to do that. Also, I ask that everybody in attendance, please be courteous to the speakers, whether you agree or disagree, I'm going to ask you to please refrain from any cheering, boos, applause, or anything like that. All that, it just becomes disruptive, so. Lastly, as we normally do, any comments the board members want to make? Mr. Odom, anybody else on staff will make general comments under general discussion. That goes to everybody on the board. So with that being said, first speaker we've got tonight is Mr. Alan Nichols.
Good evening. My name is Alan Nichols, and I teach U.S. history and contemporary issues at Central Magnet School. I am here to briefly address the Glisten Safe Space poster issue as the posters' display came into question in my classroom. There are two major issues at hand in this incident. One is student free speech, and two, supporting safe learning environments for all of our students. Let's take free speech first. I want to first assert that the poster was not mine, nor am I the sponsor of our school's GSA. Last year, students approached me requesting to display a Safe Zone poster on our classroom Tiger News bulletin board. After finding our administration's literal stamp of approval, I agreed. As I understood that I was not the only teacher asked to hang the poster, I agreed to display the poster, the same as I would with FCA, First Priority, See You at the Pole, and other student groups. Through my work in this profession, I understand that under federal law, schools are required to treat all clubs equally. Other clubs have been allowed to hang posters in classrooms, so I understood that the GSA should be able to do so as well. I also want you to know that as an educator, I keep my personal political beliefs out of my classroom, and I encourage my students to express their own beliefs. Even in his letter of complaint, the parent who questioned the poster's placement in my classroom conceded that we still had the right to display it. The next issue at hand is, in this case, is LGBT harassment and bullying. Creating a safe learning environment is important for all students. Anti-LGBT harassment and bullying is a real problem that hurts all students. Though the poster was not from a club that I sponsor, it's certainly important that my classroom is a safe, supportive environment for all young people with whom I work. Isn't making more students feel safe at school something in which all of us should be in favor? In its statements to the media, the board has made the case that the Safe Zone poster is sexually inappropriate. Surely our board knows that the words gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender are not dirty or offensive words. In fact, the state of Tennessee and our own county have both adopted numerous textbooks for various classes in which those very same words are used. Several of these course textbooks have supported incredible success rates on AP and end-of-course exams. With all of this mind, with all of this in mind, I respectfully place the ball back in your court. It is my sincere professional hope that you honor students' rights of free speech and allow my students to repost the Glisten sign. In doing so, you will show good faith in the law and honor all rights of students in Rutherford County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels.
Next we've got Dr. Jeff Clark.
I'm Jeff Clark, professor in the College of Business at MTSU, a Cumberland Presbyterian pastor, and the father of Andrew Clark, a student at Central Magnet School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. Many, many of our Central Magnet School students can tell you their own personal painful stories of having been singled out for mistreatment because of their sexual identity, or because they support their friends who are lesbian, or gay, or bisexual, or transgendered. I believe their testimony would be compelling evidence that bullying over sexual orientation at Central Magnet School, and all of our schools in Rutherford County, for that matter, is real. I could show you the photographs of Philip Parker from just over in Gordonsville, Smith County, a few miles away, or Jacob Rogers from Chatham County High School in Ashland City. Philip was 14 at the time of his suicide. Jacob was 18 years old when he took his own life. They both suffered from bullying in their schools, right here in middle Tennessee, for being gay. I believe reliving their memory of their recent deaths would be compelling evidence. The bullying over sexual orientation is real, and it's really serious. I think those stories and photographs will make a strong statement in a most important way, but what is the issue that brings this crowd together today? Is it religious beliefs? The author of the letter demanding the removal of the poster claims that the poster violates his religious beliefs and moral convictions, and I quote, "May I say to you with the deepest sincerity and as a person of faith, removing the poster and leaving my younger sisters and my younger brothers to stand vulnerable to mistreatment deeply, deeply violates my own religious beliefs and moral convictions." Surely we understand that in America, the author of the letter has the right to his beliefs, and I have a right to mine, and we actually both have the right to be wrong. The author of the letter demanding the removal of the poster says the poster isn't necessary, that a particular group should not be singled out for some form of protection. The bullying is already covered in the student handbook. But as a matter of speech, and that really gets to the point for our consideration, the issue isn't really whether you judge a student's speech to be necessary, or whether I judge a student's speech to be necessary. It doesn't matter who judges a student's to be necessary, for necessary is neither the question nor the benchmark by which freedom in America is measured. The poster is speech. Proving whether this particular poster, which followed all appropriate guidelines for display, is necessary, is not the standard by which free speech in America is judged. What is necessary to one person may well be deemed unnecessary by another one, perhaps superfluous by someone else, or even personally offensive by some. In fact, it's this very difference of opinion that our Constitution respects. It's this very difference of opinion that our Constitution protects. On behalf of our students collectively, and my sons specifically, I ask you to respect this speech, protect this speech. Thank you.
Next we've got Dr. Carol Clark.
Good evening. I'm Carol Clark. I'm a professor at MTSU. I'm a former PTO president at Central Magnet School. My son Andrew is a student there. I'm here to express my disagreement with the board regarding the removal of a poster from Mr. Nichols' classroom at Central Magnet School. The poster was on a student bulletin board, not an academic bulletin board. The board is where student, club posters, newspaper stories, awards, et cetera, are posted. The poster in question followed school process that included. It was from a school-approved club. It was approved by the school office. The poster was removed following a parent complaint. As I understand it, the issue is that the parent did not want an LGBT poster in the classroom. The point of the poster is to let students know that the classroom is a safe place. Yes, Rutherford County has a no-bullying policy, but if you read it carefully, you'll find that it does not address LGBT bullying. The board should consider the recent suicides by gay students who were bullied in nearby Tennessee counties. This issue is critical and needs to be addressed by the school system. It seems apparent, it seems that a parent complaining about a poster's content that was school-approved is not a valid reason to circumvent the constitutional rights of students, teachers, and parents. Removal of the, removal of the poster is both a constitutional issue and a student-support issue. I'm asking the board to take a stand for the constitutional rights to the teacher, the students, and parents. I'm asking the board to take a stand to publicly oppose bullying of LGBT students. I'm asking the board to allow the poster to be put back on the bulletin board. I'm asking the board to take a stand and to do what's right, both legally and morally. Thank you for your time.
Next we've got Andrew Heim.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Heim, and I'm here tonight because I fear that my fellow students' rights to free speech, rights which I hold dear, have been violated. But regrettably, this is not my only reason for being here. I stand before you in order to support a man who is quite possibly the best and most effective teacher in Rutherford County, if not the entire state of Tennessee, Mr. Alan Nichols. First of all, I would like to First of all, I would like to address the curtailing of my fellow students' rights in the name of tolerance towards certain parents' sensibilities. It is with a heavy heart that I inform everyone here tonight that this is not tolerance in any sense of the word. John F. Kennedy put it best when he asserted that tolerance implies no lack of commitment to one's own beliefs, rather, it condemns the oppression and persecution of others. Oppression and persecution, strong words, but they are necessary nonetheless. Unfortunately, a group of students at my school have been singled out and have been denied their rights of free speech. I mean no disrespect when I ask how our school board, men and women elected to put students first, could turn on us and bend to the will of those who favor intolerance. This disturbs me above all else. The second point I would like to make tonight is how utterly and completely unjust it is that the school board has failed to support Mr. Nichols and the students through this ordeal. I have been a student of his for nearly six years, and this is what I have to say. Never have I felt more welcome than in Mr. Nichols' classroom. Never have I been afraid to speak my mind, and never have I seen another student's opinion go unheard. Mr. Nichols goes out of his way to ensure that each and every student has a chance to speak their mind, and he does it while keeping his own beliefs to himself. He is the standard that every educator should strive towards. If everyone present tonight supporting him would please stand now. They are Republicans, they are Democrats, they are independents, they are libertarians, they are students, they are parents, and above all else, they are friends. And they, we, are here to return the kindness that he has shown each and every person that has walked through his door. If this is not a testament to him and the principles he and all of us stand for, I don't know what is. Ronald Reagan once said that freedom is never more than a generation from extinction. I beg that you not extinguish it for us. Thank you.
Next we have Michelle McGrath.
Hi, guys. I have a daughter in kindergarten at Wilson Elementary. My husband and I worry a great deal about the atmosphere our children are growing up in, and this is why I'm here, to address the parent who wrote the letter asking to have the posters removed. I get it, and I understand your motivations and your superintendent, Odom. You're coming from a place of love, and responsibility, and protection from what you perceive as a threat to your children, and that's very admirable. I totally get it. This parent worries that his children are going to be lured into a life of depravity, free of morality and decency. Let me put those fears to rest for all of you. Your children can no more be lured into homosexuality than they can be lured into having blue eyes. Your sexuality is cemented at birth. And I could bore you to death with the scientific studies proving that, but I'm more interested in relieving your fear, because we have enough to worry about as parents: drugs, drunk-driving pedophiles, and Miley Cyrus performances at the MTV Music Awards. That would be, that would definitely be sexually inappropriate in Mr. Nichols' classroom. So let's just take this one off the table, it's a non-issue. Let's move on. But what we're really dealing here with, and we all know it, is a deep-seated fear of homosexuality, because it's what we've been taught, especially here in the South. We've all heard the sermons. Heck, I've heard them so many times as a child, Sunday night, my Sunday morning, Wednesday night, we've all heard them, where, and some of those were the toned-down versions, like Easter Sunday, you know, where you're supposed to tone it down for the visitors so you don't scare them off, where homosexuals are lumped into the group with pedophiles and murderers and adulterers. But as I got older, I struggled with this because it just never landed with me. And what I slowly realized over my life was that my pastors, and my Sunday School teachers, and my church elders that I loved so very much could be wrong about one little thing, and it didn't mean they were wrong about everything. It just meant they were humans who were doing the same thing as this parent, obviously protecting me from what they thought would hurt me. But now that we know better, we've got to do better. Having a gay-friendly school or world doesn't mean we chuck the Bible, doesn't mean we toss it out. It simply means we're doing what Christ has called us to do, and that is to embrace everyone, regardless of the little differences, and it's all based, all of this is just based on fear. It's fear. Don't be lured into the fear that your children are going to become gay. And let me tell you from experience, these people in purple, they're just as boring as the rest of us. They're probably going to leave here and go do homework, and stop by the grocery store, and do all the mundane things that you guys do, that you just don't even know how you keep it going, but they have to do it. Being called Being called morally correct, every day.
Next we have Mr. Doug Patrick.
My name is Doug Patrick. I live in Rutherford County along with my wife. We have three children in the Rutherford County school system, and I didn't get the memo about the purple shirts, I'm going to offer a little different perspective, so. Having heard about the poster that was taken down and the subsequent threatened lawsuit by the ACLU, I want to say that it never ceases to amaze me at what lengths individuals and/or groups of individuals are willing to go as they argue for their rights. I would quickly say that as Americans, we are all uniquely blessed. If this was not so, we'd have a right for all people to have food, yet why are so many starving? We would have a right for all to have clean water, why do so many go without it? And we would have a right not to be bullied, but why are so many bullied every day? With that being said, my concern at the issue being made before you today from those that are here is about First Amendment rights, or the rights of those to choose a particular lifestyle, which is why I chose to attend the meeting tonight. For me, this issue is simply about bullying, and whether or not the Rutherford County School Board policies adequately address that concern. It is my understanding that the GLSEN organization in the particular school group that is involved claims their poster is about bullying. So my question to them is whether or not the current Rutherford County School Board policy is either inadequate, or in some way has not properly represented a particular school group, or more importantly, a particular group of kids. If that is the claim, then it seems to me that these groups, as well as the ACLU, should be here to discuss the current policy and the problems they have with it, as opposed to their rights or arguing for those rights. Taking a step further, I might even consider going so far as to make some specific recommendations to this board as to what changes they think they should be made to the current policy so as to better protect those that are represented by the poster. On the other hand, if this poster represents an attempt to promote the GLSEN's agenda, which is a clear violation in my mind of the Rutherford County School Board's policy on the promotion of agendas that have a political, social, or sexual nature, which it seems to me the poster clearly does, then I would recommend that this organization find other media options to promote that agenda, as opposed to using a classroom in the public school system. In this great and free country, they can lease billboards, they can do direct mailers, they can go door-to-door, et cetera, et cetera. And if they need money, I'm sure their friends at the ACLU would be happy to chip in. But the idea that they can promote this agenda in the public school under the guise of concerns over bullying is either not true, or again, expresses their unhappiness with the current Rutherford County School Board's policies on the subject. Bottom line, the classroom at school is not the place to promote political, social, or sexual lifestyle preferences, period. I pray that this board will leave that to the family, where it belongs, and instead focus on the fundamental tenets of education, things like reading, writing, and arithmetic. Thank you.
Next we've got Mr. James Mike Patrick.
Good evening, Mr. Odom. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, parents, teachers, and friends, thank you for giving me this opportunity on this very serious matter. For those of you before me, and for those who serve our wonderful county, I felt convicted, and who are convicted, to educate our young people. I applaud you for taking the steps and contemplating and then executing your wishes to serve our children. Your journey is a precipitous one, often caught on a path circling a mountain where two people need to pass, but there's often only spot for one person to go. Hopefully through our engagement here, and hopefully not in the courts, can we find a way to pass on that path, sharing our differences with all those involved, without bumping into one another. Speaking as a concerned parent this evening, and also speaking for nearly 50 families that have contacted me, America is a nation of laws, and we are also a nation of standards, and when a nation lowers its standards, it eventually fails. The purpose of our education system is to properly educate our children, and the fundamentals of literacy, all the while while promoting a healthy respect for our nation and each other. As educators shaping and forming our young citizens to be honest, morally responsible adults, selflessly guard and protect America for future generations, our education system should be providing the tools for children to be jealous for America, our history, our great country, and not forget the bedrock principles of which we are founded, which isn't a Christian foundation. And whether you like it or not, we have a moral obligation to fulfill that. Where America goes, so does the rest of the world. I've been a lifelong resident of Rutherford County, we've seen a fair amount of changes here, and we've seen a lot of social changes, cultural changes, economic changes. I attest that this is something that has made us stronger as a community, and it's no wonder that I have never met anyone who moved to Tennessee that's ever left. For years now, the focus and priority in the school systems are, as they should be, on academics. There is enough on kids' impressionable minds to take them off task, so let's focus on those items that'll serve them productively. I don't think these priorities are in question today, but in my heart and mind, these basics have moved off-center. When a poster like the one we're referring to, which appears on the first day of school, spotlighted in the local media, predominantly hung in a classroom, makes me question the political motives and the guerrilla marketing techniques of the group GLSEN. This group is at the forefront for the push of homosexual lifestyles, especially making it their strategy to link their cause to the universal values everyone has in common: safe schools, anti-bullying. This, in a nutshell, is their key to unlock the house. But from my vantage point, it states in its message of safe schools, it's sublimely, its pageantry, bright colors, and celebratory nature tells me, hey, young people, check this out. It's okay, try this. The statistics that are mentioned on the posters are also suspect. In regards to the number of bullying cases, it simply is, it's, the collated data doesn't match. So I would say here tonight, and I will also say in closing, I would just say that I support the board and its decisions of the board and the policies that are previously written and amended to. If we can find some, if we can find some middle ground, let's try to find some middle ground.
Next we have Mr. Timothy Kelly.
Thanks for the opportunity. I didn't prepare any notes, and I'll try to be brief, but I will say that as I look around the room, I see some very fine educators, some people I admire very much, including Ms. Paula, I can call you by your first name. She scared me to death the first few years of school because she was in charge of traffic. And she'd come out every morning, and if you didn't move along when she said move along, you thought it was the end of the world. And one of the teachers she had working for her, who I met later on, was Alan Nichols, and we've spent literally hours upon hours together, traveling, sports-related activities, school trips, and I can never remember one single time that I ever talked to Alan about politics, about religion, about anything to do with what everybody else has talked about for the last 30 minutes. When Alan and I spend time together, and he can vouch for this, we When Alan and I spend time together, and he can vouch for this, we talk about football. We both love the same team and we're fans. And that's basically what we spend most of our time talking about, is football. So what that has to do with all of this. I stand here in support of Alan Nichols, who is the finest educator I have ever come across in my life. Including all my years of college. There is none better. When Alan saw me walk into the room, he was scared to death. He came up to me shaking and he said, are you here to talk against me? And I said, no, Alan. I said, I didn't get the memo on the purple shirt thing. I don't know how much time or effort really needs to be spent. There's nothing on the agenda tonight that I know of, or on any future agenda that's been set yet. About this entire issue, but I would like to say this. Let's not spend too much time and money. Fighting on something that is either already decided. Or can be decided by the individual school itself, by the policies that we have in place. I'm a member of the white Anglo-Saxon heterosexual Protestant majority. I'm the most unprotected class in the United States. That being said, there are reasons that we have protections in place. There are reasons. That's all I will say about that issue, but I am here in support 100% of my good friend Alan Nichols.
Next we have Penny Johnson.
Okay, good afternoon Superintendent, Board Member. Some of you already know me. You may have seen me sit here many times through different PTE meetings. I am a member of PTE. I'm gonna first address you regarding as a, as a member of PTE. And then I'm gonna take that hat off and I'm just gonna talk to you as a parent. I do live in Rutherford County. I live in the Rockdale area. As a member of PTE, I want to say that we have read over what happened. We have read the document sent to you by UCLA or UCLU, sorry. And, and all the other, and several articles in the newspaper, and we are in support of you. This time, I want you all to know we are behind you. Because as you know, our acronym stands for Parents for Truth in Education. We believe that children need, do need a safe space. We absolutely need a safe space. But they need a safe space free of all indoctrination of, of sexual orientation and, and have to pick this gender over that gender. Why does that have to be brought into the classroom for children? I know you all, that unfortunately it's in the textbooks. I understand that. But does it have to be on the walls? Does it have to be that, that group singled out? I understand they're bullied. There are bullying groups all over the place. There are children who are bullied because they're overweight. There are children who are bullied because they're, they're not smart enough. There are children who are bullied because they are disabled. I have a nephew who was bullied his entire life because he had epilepsy. He had teachers bullying him. He had teachers beating him during an epilepsy fit. Until a student finally stood up for that child, for my nephew and said, this is what's going on. And that teacher was reprimanded for it. That did not happen in this school system, just so don't worry about that. But I want you to know bullying, if bullying is our issue, then why are we, why do we have to display a poster that says? For this group bullying, this is a, this is a safe zone. Why is it not a safe zone for every child? Why does any child have to be bullied or not be bullied? I don't understand this. To me, when we, when we single out a specific group, what we are doing is we say that group gets special attention. Our constitutional right and your policy say no child should get special, special recognition for an issue over another group. And to me, that's what this poster says. It says because they're this group, they get that special attention. But I think that is reverse discrimination to all the children who are bullied for other reasons. Where is their voice? Who's gonna stand up and say, hey, I deserve a poster. I deserve a poster. I read your, your policy on bullying. It does say for sex, for the purpose of sex discrimination. It does go through details. It does say that no tolerant, that there is no tolerance for discrimination or bullying of any type. Why do we have to specify a specific kind? I agree with the gentleman who was in purple, who didn't mean to be in purple. That, that I don't believe that, that this was set for this purpose of bullying. I believe that there is an agenda and I believe that agenda is to promote another agenda. And I'm not saying whether it's right or wrong. We're not here to discuss that today. But what we are here to discuss is if it's about bullying, let's make it about bullying.
Next we have Brian Gregory.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for listening to us. My name is Brian Gregory. My children are grown. I don't have any children in school anymore. Soon I'll have grandchildren in school. And I'm concerned with their future. And I'm sure everybody here is concerned with the future of our schools. I'm not for a group. I'm not against a group. I'm not for a teacher or against a teacher. What I am concerned is that this becomes a battlefield in our schools of something that our children don't need to be involved in. Something that is a question that isn't even there in children's minds, especially in the middle school. If this is about bullying, then fine. Like the former student said, or the former lady, excuse me, said bullying is wrong. Everybody here at one time or another has probably been bullied in their life. I was when I was little. I was small. I was sick. I was weakly when I was in school. I was bullied all the time. There are people here who have been bullied for overweightness, poverty, maybe didn't have the right clothes. Bullying's been going on since beginning of time with Cain and Abel. If this is an agenda about bullying, fine, let's rewrite the system. Let's rewrite the laws and the rules. You guys have the power to do that. Let's take care of it. Let's make stronger corrections. Let's make stronger mandates. But let's not turn this into a battle that children get involved in. Where political parties, sexual parties, angry parents. All of this becomes the tractor that runs over the very thing we're supposed to care about, and that's the children. Let's take care of the kids. If this is about bullying, that's fine. Nobody wants bullying. I don't believe there's any person in here that would stand up and say, oh, I want this group to be bullied. I think that's foolishness. I don't believe anybody really stands for that here. But I think there's a bunch of people worried about losing on some sort of right that they feel they might have, or their children might have. Or a fear that something might happen to their children. I understand that. My children are grown and I feared a lot and I still do. But gentlemen, and you have the power to correct this. You do. You have the power to correct it right here and now with the decisions you make. With the changes that you make. Our children don't need to be involved in some sexual battle, political battle, problems that are going on in the government. They're here for an education. A simple, honest, true education. And that's what other parents really want to send their kids to school for. If you want to send your kids for a sexual education, send them to a sexual school. Okay? I mean, really. And that's not against anybody. That's not for anybody. That's just the facts. Let's just take care of our children. Let's not make this a big war. Let's make the decisions that'll end this here, now, and today. Watch out for our kids. If there is a bullying problem, let the teachers have the power to take care of it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Let me just, let me just make one general comment before we move on. I do appreciate everybody's comments and. You know, I understand everybody's. I don't know thoughts probably. And concerns. You know, I have concerns. But as I said before, what I, what I'm gonna do, I, I just wanted to throw it out to where everybody understands. At the end of the meeting where we have general discussion, any board members that want to make comments, we'll, we'll have comments at that time. And we're not gonna get into any debates or anything like that. You know, anybody's got any comments, we'll make it that time. Is that good? All right, number eight, Mr. Odom.
No recognition. We're ready for nine.
Number nine, facilities.
Number nine is facilities. Central Magnet School Eagle Scout Project. Dr. John Ash, Principal of Central Magnet School, has requested permission to construct two soccer shelters on the field behind the school. Construction is an Eagle Scout project to be constructed by Hunter Sartain at Eagle Scout Canada. Each eight by, eight feet by 40 foot shelter will be built on a slab with a metal roof. And T11 pressure-treated plywood siding. The design has been submitted and approved by the city planner and the historic zoning commission. The shelters will be built at no cost to the board following all local and state codes. Recommend approval. Motion to approve construction of two eight feet by 40 feet soccer shelters at Central Magnet School at no cost to the board as presented.
Move to approve.
A motion by Mr. Clardy and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this?
Is Scout, is Scout Hunter Sartain here? Okay, just curious. Wanted to acknowledge him if it was.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, it's just another project that our parents and boosters and Eagle Scouts continue to do for the system. With no cost to the taxpayers or the board. So we're, we're blessed to have so many that want to contribute. And continue to save us money, so.
Anybody else? Going to favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
B is Stewart's Creek High School sign and banking contract. Dr. Clark Harold, Principal of Stewart's Creek High School, has requested permission to construct a different sign on the campus. Other than the one that was to be furnished in the original bid package. The proposed sign will be a digital sign erected with a brick pedestal. In the original location adjacent to the school and Red Hawk Parkway. The sign will be a donation from Wilson Banking Trust. And is part of a 10-year contract between the school and the bank. Dr. Harold is also requesting the board approval of the contract between Stewart's Creek High School and Wilson Banking Trust. The sign will be at no cost to the board and Rutherford County Schools Maintenance Department will hook the sign up at the appropriate time. Recommend approval. Motion to approve the 10-year contract between Stewart's Creek High School and Wilson Banking Trust. And to approve construction of a digital sign with a brick pedestal on Stewart's Creek High School campus. The sign will be furnished by Wilson Banking Trust and Rutherford County Schools Maintenance Department will connect it to the power source.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion on this?
I guess I, I guess I've got one question, Mr., I guess, Mr. Clardy. At the end of the 10-year contract, what do we do? Okay. Second question I had, just, just to clear it up. As far as the contract, I guess, Mr. McLeod or Mr. Reed be looking at it. The contract?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Odom?
Have we had this type of relationship at other schools in the past?
We have had school boards and signs both furnished. I don't know about the length of the contract. But I know it's fairly standard of this school board. And they'll be furnished by.
Anybody else? Going to favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 10, financial matters.
This is for information only. We did open a bid for Smyrna Primary School. Mr. Clardy, do you mind stepping up just a minute and making a report on that? We had, if you remember, the county commission gave us proof for design funds. We do not have construction funding at this time. We did tell this to the Health and Ed Committee when they met last time of what the bid was. And to bring it back for approval at some later date. You want to kind of tell them what the bid was and kind of who the?
The bid, of course, was for a, a classroom addition. Plus the media center expansion and then some interior work, including restroom remodeling. The bid, I don't remember the exact figure of it. Do you have it there? I didn't bring it up here with me. But it is, I believe, $66,000 more than we had in our estimate originally. And that's mainly due to inflation. As you recall, the Blackman. That bid was also higher than the estimate. So things are rising in price at this time. But as the appropriate time, we are ready to go forward with that. To the subcommit, subcommittees and the commission. As a board and the director, Dean. So when you get ready for us to take that up there, let us know and we'll. Go up and try to get a little money to do the project with.
Anybody else? Mr. Odom?
Was this a Biskin again?
It's a company called Liberty out of Franklin, Tennessee. They're a smaller contractor, which is a smaller job. It's 200, 2,600,066 dollars. So they're, they're smaller. Biskin, of course, can bond a $50 million job. These people can bond a smaller job at 2, 3, 5 million.
I want to point out, because we have so many in attendance here. One of the issues in the Smyrna Primary School construction project. Is to allow for that pass-through at the office. Which is very much a security measure that we have in almost all of our schools. Smyrna Primary is a facility that does not currently have that. And it's why the board feels like that this is an important project. We have to be good stewards of the county's finances for sure and pick the appropriate time to take it to the county commission. And, and I appreciate what the construction department is doing to help us time that correctly. But the importance of having that pass-through area. Where visitors in the middle of the day are required to move through the office and check in before entering the school facility. Is one of the reasons why this project is absolutely necessary.
That's correct. And also, they're one of the last remaining schools in the county that has very little library space. They can't even get their staff into the library hardly. And have enough room to have a staff meeting in there, so. It's a great project. They've been on the list for eight years now. And they've been getting bumped and bumped and bumped because of other overcrowding situations. So it's time to do something for them.
Mr. Clardy, Stewart's Creek High School, what, about $86 a square foot?
That's correct.
As far as the black and middle addition and this renovation at Smyrna Primary, what are the differences there? I know the inflation factor is.
They're up to about $100 or a little over now. And we're actually. Looking for interest rates to climb, start climbing and also inflation to. Be more and more as time goes by. So it's really a good time to build and, and we were very fortunate that we could build a high school. While the economy was down, but now it's picking up. As long as money's being printed, it's gonna be a pretty good picture. But if there's tough printing money, we're gonna be in.
Well, I suspect, I suspect the $2 billion claim out in Oklahoma City, a lot of the materials are going in that direction too, so.
They are. We had a, a jump in plywood, over-doubled. And now it's coming back down a little bit, but.
Number 11.
Number 11 is our annual policy manual review. And the, the board serves on the policy committee, for those in our audience, the board serves on the policy committee. Community members serve on the policy committee. Educators serve on the policy committee. And so they break the process, the policy manual up and. As we go through the process. And this is section one, which is school board operations. It's policy 1100 down to policy 8, 1808. Now, you want me to just kind of read the titles, if you'd like to do, if you want to do that? Just whatever you'd like to do.
I don't, I don't see any reason to, to read every one down through there.
Okay.
Unless somebody. Unless somebody objects. I guess that's some homework to start on. As Mr. Odom just said, we have a policy committee. And the policy committee meets once a quarter. And it's. meets once a quarter, and it's made of, made up of, uh, educators, all the board members, administrative staff, and people with the general public. So, uh, and we go over the policies, any changes we have to have be made. The actual policy committee goes over all that. And, uh, so I just wanted to just throw that out, uh, to the general public to, uh, to let everyone know that we do review the policies on an annual basis, uh, because things change pretty often, uh, as far as with state laws and everything else, so. Number twelve, uh, general discussion.
May I make a statement here? Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
If you would. Um, you know, I would say to the, to the audience and anybody that's listening to us on our county cable system or anything, you know, I know the hearts of the board members here. I'm with them considerable amount of time, and I know that they have a desire to protect the interest, to the safety of every student that's in Rutherford County Schools. We added cyber bullying, uh, which is one of the most difficult for school people to deal with because it doesn't always even happen at school. Added that to the policy this year to try to, to cover that. It's our desire that everybody feels safe. And, of course, with the county policy dealing with, uh, bullying, bullying, dealing with safety of students and all, we distributed the start of school. We've got a little over forty-one thousand students now, forty-one thousand copies of that in print that went with children home to their parents to do that. So what the board finds himself in, myself and others too, is begin to look at the classroom from an instructional perspective. And so as we, we back up and take a look at it, do we, at the same time when we, we talk about one poster, some of you, you're looking as a laser focus and we wind up as a board and myself having to look at it in more of a global thing. So, um, do we also put up posters for pro-life, pro-choice? I received my Time Magazine at home this last week, was surprised when I opened it up and saw an ad by Al Jazeera saying if I wanted another viewpoint on the news, you know? So I think as the board looks at these things, that we have to say, you know, some of the kids at Central Magnet School, sixth grader, twelve years old. And so as we have to look at it in a global sense, where many of you here are looking at it a very focused sense. So we're, our desire is for everyone to feel safe.
Anybody else?
Let, let me comment if I may first to Mr. Nichols, who I've known a long time as well. You should be pleased and this is support that you've heard. I've heard the same. And I stand amongst those people that respect you powerfully as one of our best teachers in the system and respect that. There's one of the great dilemmas that I have thought about for a long time, and that is how is it that smart, I'll put myself in that category, Mr. Nichols, if that's all right with you, and well-intentioned people can have a disagreement on some particular things and to the group. Someone said something about a deep-seated fear of homosexuality. I don't, I can only speak for me. I don't have, I don't have that. I really don't. It's not, to me, it's not a referendum on gay and lesbian. What's not at issue is that every school should be safe, every room should be safe, every student should be safe. But it's the, what's at issue is the best way to express that. Freedom of speech is not finite, it's not math, it's not two plus two always equals four. It is a very difficult thing for us to figure out exactly where that freedom of speech should or should not be. So that becomes difficult. For me, it's a personal, from a personal standpoint, my, my thinking is I am of the opinion that we want to express in every way we can. Maybe we should look at policy and make sure, absolutely sure that our policy says what it should say, that every school, every student, every room should be safe for every student because that's exactly what we want to express. Uh, I, I, I fear that when you say it's a safe for Group A, that maybe Groups B, C, and D may see that as something else, or that we've got the room across the hall making a safe zone for something else. It's cool. Room down the hall is a safe zone for something else. That, to me, that's not the message that I think our system should portray. We should be portraying that every school, every room, every student is safe as best we can possibly make, and that's, that's got to be our goal to make that happen. Uh, so, you know, it was, it was pointed out, if, if people were being bullied for being bald and overweight, I'd be in a real mess. But those things happen. And as unfortunate as it is, I don't know that we're ever going to get it stopped, but we've got to make every effort to make it. And so I'm, I'm hopeful through this process and listening to both sides of the issue, and I think all of you should hear that, you know, someone made the comment, do the right thing and make everybody happy. Well, I, I told them, I said, when I stuck the sign in the yard that says I'm running for school board, I knew that that wasn't going to happen. You can't make everybody happy. There's not, there's not a solution that we're going to walk out of here tonight with that's going to make everybody happy because you've heard both sides of the, of the issue. And, and people are passionate, and as I say, well-intentioned people, smart people have differing opinions on lots and lots of issues. Uh, so that's, that's my, my desire, and I think we do need to look at our next policy committee, look rock solid to make sure, do that. I would ask that those folks that are concerned, share with us where that policy is not correct. Share with us how we can make that policy more available if that's what we need to do. Should we post that entire policy for every group in every school in conspicuous places? Because we want to make sure that every person feels safe. That's, that, that's the goal and the desire. And, uh, and I don't, I, I don't want anyone to think that by not thinking that that poster is appropriate, that, that I have any intention of making someone feel if they're not safe.
Thank Mr. Tackett. Anybody else? Mr. Holiday?
It's not very often that we can answer a concern that's brought in these public comments, but one concern, uh, that Dr. Carol Clark raised, uh, was to ask the board to publicly oppose bullying of LGBT students. I think I'm comfortable publicly opposing bullying of LGBT students. I'm even more comfortable with what my colleague, Tim Tackett, said. Every room of every school should be safe for every student. I think that's a real good takeaway and maybe the, uh, the thing that we can move forward with, every room of every school should be safe for every student. I think that's what's in our policy already, but we certainly had the opportunity tonight. I want to always say I appreciate immensely the courage and the care that citizens who will come and address the board or citizens who will come and observe the board show. Your citizenship is to be applauded. Thank you for participating and giving us your input. As you watch the board and observe the board, I think you will be proud of what this board does to influence the exemplary performance that our school system puts out. We are an outstanding school system, and it's not by accident, and I think every room of every school should be safe for every student. That's a good takeaway.
Mr. Blair?
Mr. Chairman Hodge, I wasn't going to say anything because I thought Mr. Odom and Mr. Tackett and now Mr. Holiday, um, have been quite eloquent, and I'm not sure that I can be as eloquent as they have been, but, and I have responded back into some, responded back to some of the parents in the email. I know what bullying feels like. As a primary and elementary school child from two boot collar parents, family of six with a severe speech impediment, uh, I know what that feels like. And, and bullying is not only very important to me, but I know it is to this board and, and the passports that we've had, it's always been a priority. We have spent millions of dollars in upgrading schools for security. We have what I thought was a pretty ironclad, uh, policy regarding bullying, bullying, and, and I was unaware that there was such, that we had such an issue at, at Central Magnet. And, uh, but as, as Mr. Tackett has said, you know, let's go back, let's revisit it. Uh, I would, I would ask for Board Attorney Jeff Reed to possibly have some comments tonight, and we continue in our process to make sure that, uh, that every room, every school are as safe as they possibly can be. And, uh, and I think not only am I adamant about it, I, I know this board is, I know you are, Mr. Odom, and the central office and administrators and our educators. And as a, as a child with a, with a challenge, uh, my, my principals, my teachers are what made me feel safe. And as long as we all have that mentality, uh, I think we'll move forward and can get beyond this and, and make sure all of our schools, again, are as safe as they can be.
Anybody else? I'll just, I'll just make a couple of general comments. I think, uh, Mr. Tackett probably said what I really wanted to say. In regards to Mr. Nichols, I want to thank you for the wonderful job you do in teaching. Uh, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe my daughter had you. Did one of my kids have you as teacher?
Hold switch.
Okay, okay. Anyhow, I know, I know what. Okay.
He's the good one now.
I know what, I know what a good job that Mr. Nichols does do, and, uh, I think everybody's made mention of that this evening anyhow. Uh, secondly, uh, I will tell you that as chairman, uh, it seems like some of the comments made tonight that, uh, uh, some people, uh, may think we have problems, uh, with our policies. So I'm going to ask Mr. McCloud, our staff attorney, and Mr. Reed, uh, to research that and, uh, if there's anything that we need to adjust, we'll bring it to the policy committee and, and make do. As Mr. Tackett said, anybody that feels like there's something in our policy that's wrong, feel free to contact us. Uh, or feel free to contact Mr. McCloud, staff attorney, or Mr. Reed, board attorney. So, uh, anything else? Right now, it's Mr. Reed if he wants to speak to anything, or Mr. Black.
No, Mr. Reed.
Mr. Reed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Young, I'm sorry.
Hold up, Mr. Reed.
I was just sad that, uh, you know, that the other day here, we all have our differences and differences of opinions, but Mr. Odom here has the hardest job of anybody in the school system. And I think he deserves our support and, uh, whatever decision that is, we all need to back him one hundred percent on this decision, the school board and every member of this audience. So just take that home with you and think about that also. You want to talk about the dedication to them?
Mr. Reed.
I'm sorry.
Chairman, board members, just to address, obviously, there's.
On beliefs on both sides of the fence with respect to this issue, and with school system always has the role of doing is trying to make rules that the whole system as a whole can, or live with and work with, that all the students within the school system can live under and have a fair and good education in the school system. And with that in mind, um, you have to look at these issues in that context. Um, and in that sense, courts who have dealt with these issues have said school systems are, 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 have to keep a neutral role with respect to these issues, that school systems are not supposed to be seen advocating one side or the other side. What you often see the courts do is say that the school system should remain neutral in regards to these issues. I think the issues with this particular sign, which we saw is maybe in the minds of several people, it could be viewed as not being neutral. So, and whether that perception's correct or not, that perception's there in the minds of a large percentage of the population. So with that being the case, um, you have to look and say, well, is this an appropriate sign for the classroom environment? Is this going to be beneficial to the classroom environment, or is it going to be a distraction for the classroom environment? Because first and foremost, we're there about education, and that's what the school system is, is charged with respect to doing. So when you look with respect to the freedom of speech issues, uh, people say your, your speech is being violated because you take down a sign, but really, in the classroom environment, the courts are very clear, there's not an absolute freedom of speech right on, on behalf of teachers in the classroom. Because what the courts have recognized is that the school system have obligations to make sure that the system as a whole functions well and that you provide an education that's beneficial to all students of all types, of all beliefs, all religions, all, all backgrounds. So when you look at our school system, particularly in the school system of Rutherford County, you have over three thousand teachers. So among those three thousand teachers, you have a whole host of different beliefs concerning politics, concerning religion, concerning social issues. So what the school system has to do is establish a curriculum that will be beneficial and serve the school, school group as a whole. When you get a situation where you have one particular focus group that is issued, is, has one particular political issue as their agenda, it may become an issue for other people in the classroom to have that in the classroom environment. And while some students may be supportive of that position, other students may be opposed to it. And what you have to do is find a line that, that will allow all students to feel like they have a wholesome environment in the classroom, that they can be free to express themselves in the classroom as a whole and not be having a teacher advocate one position or another because as teachers and as ambassadors of the school system, they're charged and we are charged as a school system to maintain neutrality with respect to some of these controversial issues. Because obviously, this is just one issue, there's lots of controversial issues out there. Once you start allowing teachers to post whatever they want to in classrooms, then you have a whole host of problems that can arise. And at that point, it appears the school system is advocating a position, a particular position when it may not be. In the end, is it, is it going to be a distraction for the school system or beneficial to the education process? And that's what the school system has to ask for itself. But courts have recognized that, and courts have drawn a clear distinction between classroom speech and general speech that takes place outside the classroom. Teachers are free to have whatever beliefs they want to have. They can express those beliefs outside of the classroom however they wish, but within the classroom, teachers have to abide by what rules the school system sets and stick to the curriculum they're charged with. So I'll just give that, um, bit of legal opinion to the board and leave it with you.
Anybody else? Mr. Nipper?
Okay, Mr. Chairman and Board, uh, Mr. Young, myself, and Mr. Evans, we're honored today to go out to the Chase Donnell Make-A-Wish dedication out at Walter Hill. Uh, for some of you that don't know this young man, this, uh, who, uh, this kid developed leukemia, I believe, and, uh, you know, instead of, uh, you know, he was granted a Make-A-Wish. Instead of taking that and doing something like going to Disney World or, or whatever, his wish was to, uh, help the school. He got a new paint job for the gym. He got a speaker system and a new audio system put in at the school. Here was a young man that, instead of thinking for himself, he thought of his others, he thought of the school. Our school system must be very, very good for children to think that highly of it. The teachers out there, I'm sure, did a great job. They do a great job every day. I met with some of them today. They continue to do a great job, and I believe our school system does an exceptional job. And I just think that we, at this time, should, should understand that there are things that go wrong, there are things that some of us think that go wrong, but there is so much good that is done in our system to educate over forty-one thousand students. And I just thought, uh, we should say that in, in closing.
Anybody else? Mr. Uh, Mr. Tackett?
Let me mention, uh, the dedication that will take place at six forty on Friday night at Oakland High School for Ray Hughes. The stadium will be named for Ray Hughes. Ray was the first football coach at Oakland. Many of us knew him and knew him well, and it's a great honor for him. He's unfortunately in very poor health at this particular point in time, uh, but I know he and his family will be very honored by that, and, uh, I, I think we should just take this point in time and make sure we recognize, uh, the great work that Mr. Hughes has done. Uh, he's raised a wonderful family, uh, two of which, I, I think all three, as a matter of fact, are, and daughters are involved in education in some very specific way. So congratulations to, to Ray Hughes and, and thanks, Mr. Spurlock, for seeing that this, uh, long overdue dedication is taking place.
Anybody else? If nothing further, we're adjourned.